Portage County Board of Supervisors meeting, recorded February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
It's five o'clock. We'll call the county board to order. Roll call.
We have seventeen supervisors attending in person, four attending remotely, three excused supervisors, Madine, Ura, and Robbie, and one vacant.
Pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
invocation by Supervisor Dubek.
Loving God, we thank you for all the blessings that you have given us through your goodness. Tonight, we ask that you grant us wisdom as we make decisions for Portage County that are not only in the best interest today, but keeping in mind the interests of future generations of Portage County citizens. We ask for compassion this evening as we deal with issues that affect those citizens whose voices are not being heard as they should be. Let us be that voice for them in a compassionate, caring, and loving way. We ask that you bless all the brave women and men of our country who are serving in the armed forces abroad, keeping us safe, and those who serve us closer to home as EMTs, peace officers, and firefighters. Keep them safe and free of all harm. Being that today is election day, we take a moment to remember, exercise, and appreciate the right that so many before us have fought to obtain. May we never take this sacred right for granted, and we wish to express our gratitude for the many unsung heroes of this election, the poll workers, many of whom have worked tirelessly today since the wee hours of the morning with a smile on their face and will continue to labor all night to ensure that we have safe and fair elections. Amen.
Amen. Next item. Mine on. Next item is a moment of silence for county clerk Roger Risha and former zoning administrator, Steve Brazelli. Roger was a county clerk from nineteen seventy-eight, started in nineteen seventy-eight for twenty-eight years, and Mr. Brazelli had thirty-five years with the county and retired in two thousand nine. I would ask for a moment of silence for both of them. Thank you. Approval of January eighteen, twenty twenty-two minutes. Moved by Supervisor Dubek, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Discussion or changes? There's no corrections or changes. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a presentation, solar energy. Matt Johnson with Wisconsin Land and Liberty Coalition. I asked Matt to come down and give us a little presentation. We are looking at the possibility of doing something in the future and wanted to make sure everybody had the opportunity to understand what it is that we're talking about, so. Go ahead, take it away.
Thank you. Can you guys all hear me? Well, my name's Matt Johnson. So I do committee outreach across the state of Wisconsin about renewable energy, solar projects, rooftop solar and such, building education, awareness, and support for renewable energy. I do a lot of community outreach. I've done a lot in Portage County, talking with Rotary Clubs, speaking with the Planning and Zoning Committee in late November, and I'll be continuing outreach in the future as well. And I have a state supervisor that focuses more on like state policy and legislation. So Scott focuses more on state legislature, and I do a lot more community outreach throughout the state. So includes obviously meetings like this, events like Farm Tech Days, Rotary Kiwanis Clubs, Town Board meetings and such. So for some background, previously, United States, we've gotten a lot of our electricity from coal. We're going to see an increase in where we get our electricity from renewable energy, including solar power. And so in the next few decades, we'll see a lot more renewable energy being brought online, whether it's rooftop solar or larger solar projects or wind projects. And there will be a lot more natural gas projects as well, and then there will be less coal and nuclear power. And for solar power, these graphs are more for larger scale solar, but it does also apply for rooftop solar as well. Essentially, in the last fifteen years, there's been a dramatic cost decrease in solar power, whether it's rooftop solar, ground-mounted solar, larger solar projects. The technology has gone much more efficient, even in fifteen years. It's for the larger scale projects, it's about a tenfold decrease in costs. So the panels generate more electricity for cheaper cost. And so essentially, now solar power at the larger scale is cheaper than coal. It's competitive with, competitive with natural gas, and that's part of the reason why we're seeing more solar power popping up all across the state in different sizes. So for rooftop solar in Wisconsin, the technology has, has advanced a lot in the last fifteen years. So whether it's homeowners, business owners, you know, local governments that have solar panels on municipal land or county land, we're seeing more and more solar panels and projects across the state. And so essentially, solar installers for like rooftop solar will evaluate, you know, how much electricity a homeowner may use or business may use, or like how much like municipal building uses, and then evaluate how many panels would be needed to, you know, meet that electricity and generate electricity. And so utilities here in Wisconsin, like if you produce excess energy more than what you actually use, oftentimes they'll buy it from you. Sometimes the rate isn't as high as it probably should be. But, you know, if you are a homeowner or business owner, you generate more electricity than you actually use, they'll purchase it back. It just is a lower rate than obviously what they, they charge you. And so there are different programs here in Wisconsin. There's like a focus on energy program, which is probably used more for like homeowners and business owners. Essentially, they're like, you know, tax benefits for, you know, rooftop solar. And Wisconsin has this program focused on energy where it's also used for like energy conservation, like if you get special light bulbs for your house or for businesses, or better heating and cooling products, but then also for solar panels on a business or a house. And so there are tax credits for that. And then here in Portage County, there, there are great solar installers, North Wind Renewable Energy, Photovoltaic Systems LLC, and there's more in the region. So they're right here in Portage County, and then there's more across the state too. So there are larger scale projects as well. You may know that there's a project in Wood County that's a larger scale project in the town of Saratoga. Often the larger projects, whether it's on, you know, county land or municipal land or private land, usually requires dry flat land. For these larger projects, there are pretty significant economic benefits as well, whether it's construction jobs, long-term maintenance jobs to operate those projects. For the larger projects, and even, you know, ones as small as, you know, five, ten acres, there's land lease payments to farmers as well. And then for larger projects as well, there are shared revenue payments to local and county governments, which are pretty substantial as well. Wisconsin has a utility aid formula where if a project is over a certain threshold of fifty megawatts, essentially, the project generates revenue for the towns and county the project is in. And the payments can be really quite substantial, you know, sometimes hundreds of payments, hundreds of thousands of dollars per year or more. And essentially, it goes to a general fund that the county has or towns have. And so we're seeing more of these bigger projects pop up across the state too. So for the bigger projects, depending on their size, they're either locally permitted through towns and county or through the Public Service Commission. Both are pretty rigorous processes. Often, these private companies for the larger projects will have joint development agreements with towns and counties detailing what roads might be used for the project and other important details. And so for solar power in general, there's a really high demand for these jobs. We actually don't have enough workers that want to be solar installers right now. There's a lot of openings across the state for these companies. And so they are good paying jobs in different parts of the state. And we do have programs, our tech schools for solar installation technicians or wind technicians as well. And so it's an industry that, while a little small right now in Wisconsin, is growing and growing. And so this is, this is happening all across the state. And sometimes I get questions about, you know, are solar panels effective in Wisconsin? And they are. We, we still receive a lot of sunlight to make rooftop solar worth it. Or, you know, solar on, you know, five acres or larger projects as well. We do receive a lot of sunlight, so it is worth it to have these solar projects or rooftop solar in Wisconsin. And it's happening all across the state too. And I'm not sure if, how much time there is, but I can take a question.
Does anybody have any questions? Supervisor Moresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your presentation. I really do appreciate it. Being in the industry for, well, quite a while now, it, it's finally about time that we're moving this forward, forward on a municipal and county scale. A little bit about the money that can be generated for the counties. If, Al, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chair, is the proposed project in the town of Grant is looking at about two hundred and fifty megawatts, is that correct?
I'm not aware. I, I'm not.
It's about two hundred and fifty.
Executive Holman shaking his head yes, so I'll go with that.
So, yeah, and if I understand correctly, that, that reaps about two thousand dollars per megawatt in, in tax generation annually. So those numbers equivocate to about five hundred thousand dollars per year annually. And over the course of ten or twenty years, that's ten million dollars that we can use here in Portage County in tax dollars. Of course, most of that would go to the town of Grant or whatever municipality it's in, but that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money. And that's a lot of good money, good clean money in our community. I do understand that most of this, I think the group that you, you work for, they're promoting this on the utility scale, is that correct?
Yeah, so most of my presentations are about utility scale. I do have, you know, some knowledge about rooftop solar. My supervisor Scott focuses more on rooftop solar and legislation in regard to that, and then I'm usually more at the larger projects.
Yeah. I guess that one thing that I would really love us to look at further, and that's probably through the chair or Executive Holman, is just the joint development agreements and how that can benefit our municipalities and our local region. You know, what, what can we do for the town of Grant to make it really sweet for them? What can we do for the surrounding landowners to make sure that, you know, they're satisfied with a project of this scale coming to their neighborhood? Because there's always questions, you know, whether it's wind or it's solar facilities or any kind of large manufacturing facility, there's lots of questions. But if this is going to be successful, that joint agreement is incredibly important. And I do have some ideas of how we can write that and make that really successful for those communities and Portage County as a whole. So be happy to work with the Planning and Zoning Chair, Executive Holman, or whoever's in, in charge at that time to, to make that happen, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And to touch on the tax revenue benefits, for Wisconsin, it's four thousand dollars per megawatt, so.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, so it's, so how it's broken down is that the state Department of Revenue has the formula where about fifty-eight percent goes to the county, and then forty-two percent goes to towns. And so for renewable energy, it's four thousand dollars a megawatt. For fossil fuel generation, it's two thousand though. So for, you know, two hundred and fifty megawatt project for solar, it would generate a million dollars a year. And then the county gets about fifty-eight percent. It's this very specific calculation of seven twelfths of the money, and then the towns get the remaining forty-two percent. And it's unrestricted aid payments. There are communities that, you know, have projects operating now. Sometimes they use it to improve fire EMS services, road repair, snow removal. Some communities, like towns, use it to reduce property taxes sometimes. So there's a lot of options to use it. But it, it's a pretty significant revenue source. Wind projects that have been in, operating in Wisconsin, you know, for two, you know, twenty years also generate revenue like that as well. So some of those counties that have a lot of projects, like Fond du Lac County, they get a good, good chunk of money from projects like this, so adds up to be a lot. And then for joint development agreements, it's what I tell communities, it can be really helpful because you can cover what we're.
Petroleum and natural gas that are used in Wisconsin for transportation. You know, everybody thinks of solar in terms of household use, but here's the thing. Have you read that five hundred and twelve page report from Geological Survey of Finland?
No, I haven't.
I looked that up on, on a search engine because it, it seems that the, more or less, the, the limits of the petroleum resource have been reached, and globally speaking. And I know that Wall Street Journal just had a story the other day that the, the best days of fracking for petroleum are done now, and a lot of companies are realizing that, backing out of the industry. So if we knew like how many gigabit use of petroleum energy is used to move around in, in the state, and the role that solar is going to play in electrifying that mobility, I think you could, you could make a harder hitting presentation or add some urgency to the, to the thing. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't think we have those numbers. There's another good nonprofit called Renew Wisconsin. They may have those numbers. They've, they've been operating for about thirty years in Wisconsin and have a little bit more knowledge and data about, you know, electric vehicles and such, and, you know, the difference of, you know, transitioning to more electric vehicles. Yeah, it's a, it's another transition as well, the transition to more electric vehicles is happening too.
Yeah, it's just going to be a bit more urgent than we may be thinking as the head of Total Petroleum came out a couple of months ago and said, by mid-decade, there'll be a ten million barrel a day shortfall of petroleum produced globally, which is about one twelfth of the global total now. And right now, there's about a million and a half barrel a day shortfall. So I think you can see where the trajectory is at. And by the way, Midstates is here. They could be thinking in terms of a little workshop at the, at the new training center for electric vehicles, training people how to make this new form of mobility, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it, yeah, like I said, I, you know, I think we'll see a pretty significant increase in electric vehicle sales in the next ten, fifteen years. And yeah, it'll definitely be a transition, not just for, you know, renewable energy for rooftop solar, larger projects, and electric vehicles too. It'll be, it'll be really interesting. I know a lot of the large car manufacturers are transitioning to electric vehicles the next fifteen years, whether it's like GM or Ford or Toyota. So it, it's an interesting time.
So is there any other questions? We'll take one from the audience. Just right, you can right there, oh, okay.
Yes, third street. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments and a question. There is an environmental impact with mining raw materials in solar and also in renewable. I know some of the larger municipal type of systems regarding solar, maybe direct power. Batteries are also a component in residential systems. And there's also, of course, mining for the lead, which we commonly use in batteries. You mentioned that efficiencies have increased. I guess you said costs have dropped because we've had more people in there, capitalist society. You've got more innovation and, and more competition, which is a wise thing, of course. But as far as the efficiency of the panels, my understanding is that it's increased very little since their inception. You know, that being the case, if you couple that with the fact that energy from solar panels over time diminishes, you're beginning to lose some of the investment you put into this also. Do you have any knowledge in regards to how much more efficient these very same panels are from their inception fifteen, twenty years ago as to today? Because my understanding is they haven't improved much. Solar, renewable, will never power an urban area or an industrial center. And until our efficiencies make a quantum leap forward, we won't see enough of what the investments, because they're very expensive systems. I've looked at them over the years also. Matter of fact, I have a solar panel with a small solar generator, which has been problematic, to say the least for myself. But could you shed some insight on how much more efficient in a quantitative fashion they are from their inception up, up to today? Thank you, Mr. Chair and the board.
Yeah, so for efficiency of solar panels, I think we've reached the point now where I think they're about like four hundred, four hundred and fifty watts. And I think that's a pretty significant increase, even the past five years, where maybe it was two hundred and fifty, three hundred watts. So they are, they are producing a lot more electricity per panel just in the last five, ten years, for sure. And I think there's still a long way to go. My understanding is that depending on the solar panel manufacturer or which specific panels, it's maybe about eighteen to twenty-two percent efficient. And so the, these panels have gone dramatically efficient in the last fifteen years, but there's a long way to go to have them to be even more efficient. But yeah, just the last few years, a pretty dramatic increase where I think it's about four hundred and four, four hundred and fifty watts per panel. So it's good to see that efficiency, and I think we'll see a lot more efficiency down the road, which will make solar power even cheaper than it is now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Executive Holman and I have been looking at a, a project for the county and hopefully if we're all here next year, after April, we can, be something we can continue to work on or hopefully you folks can take it forward. So a bigger project, you have to find that sweet spot where you're not putting it into storage. And one of the places we talked about was highway. It's a big electrical consumer. So if we can power that during the day and not be at peak time, it's cost avoidance. That's where we save the money, so. Something we've talked about and we've looked at, and we're in the very early stages of it. So that's one of the reasons we wanted to have someone come in here and make sure you folks were educated on solar, at least at a broad stroke, so. Thank you.
I love, I love something, in case anyone has any questions. I got two young kids at home.
Nope, nope. You could stay for a couple hours with us if you'd like, but. Thank you, sir.
Write your note.
Supervisor Moresi.
I, I just have a question about if it would be wise for us to move number fourteen up, right up front? Because we have a bunch of guests here that might be here for a very long time, otherwise.
You're fine.
Okay. I tried.
The agenda, the agenda, number thirteen ties in with number fourteen, so the agenda is in order. Members of the public that wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their request at this time, with such comments subject to reasonable control of the county board chair set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. Anybody from the public? State your name.
William Kepke.
William Kepke? Which item, sir? Wolf population, thank you.
Mike Wazak, just here in support of item number fourteen.
What was the last name again?
Call that, please.
Anybody else? All right. Moving on. Confirmation of twenty twenty-two Portage County Emergency Fire Wardens. If there's no objections, I will take them all in one motion as printed. Motion by Pataki, seconded by Gussel. Discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution and ordinances. Approval and authorization, acceptance of donated funds from Tom Newton and a twenty twenty-two budget adjustment for playground equipment at Lake Emily.
Resolution number one ninety-four, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Parks Commission and Finance Committee. This resolution approves and authorizes the acceptance of donated funds and subsequent budget adjustment for playground equipment. This is, is a budget adjustment and requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Morrow, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. Discussion? I just want to say that it's, it's great that we have people in the community that donate this kind of money towards playground equipment, eighty thousand, four hundred dollars. It's, it's a pretty big chunk, so that should put some nice equipment out there at Lake Emily, so. If there's no other discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number seven, resolution concerning Wisconsin wolf population goal to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Wolf Management Plan.
Resolution number one ninety-five, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, submitted by the Land and Water Conservation Committee. This resolution advises that Wisconsin approve a wolf population goal of three fifty or less, request county involvement in the DNR Wolf Advisory Committee, and for problem wolves not to be relocated to Portage County.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by, no.
I'm not, my motion is to, to table this discussion.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jakowski. Supervisor Moresi. We have, we have one gentleman that would like to speak though, too. Solomon, let him.
What's his name?
William Kepke? Come up to the mic, please.
Hello? Is that on?
Yep.
William Kepke, born and raised in Wisconsin. I grew up with beagles, grew up with bearhounds, deer hunting my entire life in this state. And I currently spend all of my free time in the fall hunting from here to Bayfield with bird dogs. And I'm here to urge everyone to do as the Wisconsin motto is and to think forward. We've attempted this three hundred and fifty number since nineteen ninety-nine, and we've repeatedly failed at successfully managing for this number or using this number as a declaration nationwide. And if we actually want to manage this animal properly at the state level, I believe we need to be supporting research and science into a much different number because as we saw this last year, three fifty, and the management practices we pursued this last year were not seen favorably federally, nationwide. And the notes, the report I saw passed around for this motion, and it even discusses how wolves are capable of living and thriving in areas we didn't think were possible. And that this original three hundred and fifty number is based off of a time and a place where we poisoned animals, we put poison out in the landscape. We, our idea of conservation was very, very dark, very, very wrong. And this number is coming off of a point at which we have extrapated this animal from the landscape. And we live in a very different time now, right? We want, we want to be seen as a, as a state that wants biodiversity, wants a whole landscape. We want all of our flora and fauna. And I think if we pursue three fifty or less, we're going to continue to fail at the federal level, and we're going to lose control of how we manage our state resources. So I'm here to urge us not to sign this and to think forward. So that's it. Thank you.
Supervisor Moresi, can you clarify your, your motion?
I, I can. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The main reason I'd like to, to table this is, first and foremost, is on February tenth, the U S District Court ruled that they are returning wolves to the lower forty-eight states, excluding the Mountain Rocky, Rocky Mountain region to the Federal Endangered Species List. So that's, that's reason number one. The other reason is that when I listened in on the committee, um, virtually the other night, when this discussion came up, there was, there was no real discussion on it. Supervisor Neville had a few questions and they were answered by other county board supervisors who are not subject experts on this field. Um, they advocated for a number of three hundred and fifty or less. Uh, that is their prerogative to do so. I, I do not agree with that number. Um, I don't feel like they were given, uh, the full, the committee was given the full kind of ramifications and science behind the decision of the three hundred, uh, the decision to have a three hundred and fifty number. Uh, so I made a couple of phone calls. One of them was to Dr. Eric Anderson, who is professor at the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point, uh, and a close personal friend of mine, and I said, uh, Eric, what, where's this three fifty number come from? Can you tell me anything? And he's like, that's funny you should ask that, Vinnie. I was actually on that committee in nineteen ninety-nine when we thought three hundred and fifty uh, animals, three hundred and fifty wolves was kind of our pie in the sky number. If we could achieve that, it would be an amazing feat. Well, they achieved that number. Uh, there was two hundred at the time. There's three hundred, there was three hundred and fifty was the goal. We are now at around between a thousand and eleven hundred. Um, I feel like the committee did not have a full amount of information about this to make a good decision. And I think some of the committee members would say the same thing if they had a subject expert in the room to give them the data that was available. Um, the twenty twenty-one hunt, uh, was a failure to some. Uh, some people thought it was a success. It exceeded the wolf quota by eighty-two percent. The quota was two hundred. That was a hundred and nineteen, uh, for, um, people applying for licenses and permits and eighty-one reserved for the A'jibwa tribes. Uh, we killed two hundred and sixteen animals that were registered. That is, uh, sixteen over the quota, but, uh, they also took eighty-one animals that were not designated for them. Uh, those animals were the tribe's prerogative whether or not they wanted to harvest them and they chose not to. Um, I think by passing this resolution, we're sending a message that we're in Portage County willing to violate federal law uh, by doing it. This resolution, in my opinion, is, uh, more of an advocacy, uh, arm of, um, or advocacy, advocacy decision. And I don't really feel like we should be doing that in government. We should be actually ruling, uh, creating policy to make change, not advocating for one position or the other. So I would like to table it. Um, and if they want to bring it up at another time when the wolf population is actually out of control, then, uh, we can discuss it. Currently it is not. The science is telling us that about twelve hundred and fifty animals is uh, sustainable in Wisconsin. Um, I did some reading on Adrian Whitevan, who is the actual, the wolf expert in, in, uh, Wisconsin. Uh, he was also on that committee. Um, this decision of three hundred and fifty animals is not based on current science. And I believe that we should reject it for that, that alone.
So are you making a motion to table it?
I am making a motion to table it.
I'll second it.
To table it or postpone it, Vinnie? Tabling it is indefinite, correct?
Well, tabling is usually done when something, uh, comes up unexpectedly when you're dealing with the main motion. So it's probably more appropriate for it to be a motion to postpone.
I will defer to, um, Attorney Ray. Thank you for deciphering Robert's Rules of Order for all of us.
So we have a motion.
Postpone, thank you.
To postpone. Do I have a second? Seconded by Supervisor Gifford. Are you seconding it or you have a question or both?
Both.
Okay. Uh.
Thank you.
Yes, we need to identify a date when we postpone it to next county board?
You can postpone indefinitely. That's acceptable. If you just motion to postpone and don't set a date, it defaults to indefinitely.
Hey, very good with that. I know this gets, this postpone and, and table gets murky. Yes.
Oh, I'll postpone indefinitely.
Okay, postpone indefinitely. Are you fine with that? Supervisor Gifford?
Yep.
Is your second?
Yep.
To postpone indefinitely. Short questions on this. We got a full agenda, but go ahead.
Yeah, I understand. No, I had a, I had a big question when I saw this resolution and my question was this, um. I just wondered if, uh, if Great Lakes Indian Fish and Wildlife Commission were consulted on this. I know the, uh, you know, under the treaties of the eighteen fifties, um, the ceded territories are supposed to, uh, be co-governed, so to speak, with, uh, with the tribes up north. I know Phoebe Kebic from the Great Lakes Indian Fish Wildlife is really hot about the wolf hunts and wants that stuff stopped. Uh, and I know Goki, Sandy Goki over at Red Cliff is also against this. So I just wonder if the notion of, you know, sovereign tribes or sovereign nations really been respected in this case because where's the sovereignty if you don't have a voice in the process? So that's my question.
I would think that would be up to the state. Uh, Supervisors Astro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I am on the, uh, Land and Water Committee and I, I did vote in the affirmative for this at our committee meeting, uh, but not knowing all the facts at that time. And after doing some, uh, research, I find that, uh, I am in agreement with Supervisor Maresi and would, uh, vote in the affirmative of that.
Did anybody else have their hands up as well for a question? Supervisor Rakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As probably one of only two or three in this room, I've lost animals to depredation. It's unconfirmed if it's wolf or not. I don't really care what the numbers are. I want the ability to protect the animals I raise on my farm and under federal government. That does not allow me to do that. It makes me a criminal. So, so this is really disturbing when people say this number's okay. I have to fight with wildlife all the time on my farm. And I'm fine with them when they're in the woods. This past week, I had a fox in my barn. And, and it's year round. It never stops.
Can someone answer whether we had a resolution a number of years ago from the county board that was passed on these wolves as well?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
And was that the three hundred and fifty number as well?
I believe so.
It was.
Thank you. Refreshing my memory.
Actually, I didn't.
Somebody else have any questions? Supervisor Neville?
Well, it's not a question, but I would also be in favor of sending this, uh, postponing it indefinitely.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Just like to answer Supervisor Gifford here. The Great Lakes, or tribal, um, interests, um, Great Lakes Indian Fish and Wildlife, is that native fish and water that you referenced? They are part of the Wolf Committee that's rewriting the Wolf Plan currently. So there is representation.
They're being consulted on.
There, there is representation. I just want to get that.
Thank you for that.
With the state of Wisconsin, they have representation on the Wolf.
Thank you. Supervisor Maresi.
Just one quick one to Supervisor Larry Rakowski. Um, I am not saying that a farmer should not have the ability to, uh, take care of animals that are causing nuisance. I think that is well within the, the guise of, uh, protecting your investments. Um, Adrian Whitevan, who is the wolf expert in the state, says while wolves do cause predation on a small number of Wisconsin farms, scientific studies in Montana, Wisconsin have demonstrated that the most effective way to reduce such predations is by direct control on farms, not a statewide wolf harvest. So.
Supervisor Reeser. You're muted.
Uh-oh.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. I would just like to, uh, I agree that, um, I would like to see this um, postponed indefinitely, but I think there's, as several people have stated, there's some serious misunderstandings about the wolf policy and what's going on with the biology. We have a carrying capacity of between nine hundred and maybe thirteen hundred animals in the state. Uh, I'm not suggesting that we need a population that high, but we certainly need a popu- population in that eight hundred to nine hundred number area. If you come in and artificially decrease that population, say to the arbitrary number of three fifty or three seventy-five, what do you do is you destabilize that population. And in fact, wolf numbers and wolf depredation goes up. So I don't know a single wildlife biologist or ecologist in the state that would support these numbers. So I'm in favor of, uh, postponing this indefinitely. Thank you.
Was there any other question? Supervisor Gussel, did you have your hand up for a question or comment? No. Charlie, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, uh, I, I have a problem with this. If we let that population get too high, we are mostly in a populous area. And if we get that in there pretty soon, what happens is you're, you're gonna have, let's say, kids are gonna get killed.
Okay.
This has been play, I understand, for some time at this figure of three fifty. I think it should be continued.
Anybody else? We have, um, Supervisor Dodge.
I guess, um, there's a notation here that kind of bothered me and I'd like some explanation if it's possible. Uh, we're asking that the Wisconsin DNR not relocate problem wolves from other counties into the county of Portage. So what kind of circumstance would that be?
Anybody have the answer to that? I do not.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski. The best I can. Under current um, wolf depredation laws now with the recent court case, no wolves can be euthanized. So that wolf has to be relocated. It's up to the DNR biologist, it's up to the warden, it's up to the U S Fish and Wildlife, depending who's working on that case, where they relocate it. There is nothing that says they can't take a wolf from Portage County and put it in Wapaka County. There's nothing that says they can't take a wolf from Wapaka County and put it in Portage County.
But what would be the circumstance? I mean, have they tasted human blood or, um?
In most cases.
This is not a fairy tale.
In most cases.
And I'm not being facetious. I'm serious.
In most cases, Supervisor Dodge, it would be livestock.
Okay, that they've attacked livestock.
Correct. Uh, the wellers in southern Portage County have, over the years, have had uh, wolf depredation on several occasions. Uh, they travel up and down those, the wolves travel up and down the marsh roads, so very little traffic, very little human contact, so they're moving back and forth. When they find a herd of cattle and or smell amniotic fluid, those wolves are on the move. So it's, uh, it can be, it can become a situation where, where a wolf uh, and or a wolf pack has, has, again, not per se tasted human blood, but found an easy meal.
Yeah.
And so it, it can cause some problems. So if per se a wolf in Grant County is eating, uh, livestock there and they find someone who is willing to let them bring it to Portage County, it, they can be moved around again because those animals can't be euthanized, so.
I want to remind everybody to beat you back to where they came from.
Sometimes they do.
I want to remind everybody, this is not, we're not voting either yes or no to allow it. We're only voting that we are either supporting or not supporting of it. Supervisor Soik.
Um, I heard Supervisor Reeser say that, uh, we're at, you know, eight hundred to thirteen hundred would be acceptable. And I'm, I'm just wondering why, why is this needed and, and why would that be an acceptable number? Why? Why, why have we brought them back to the state? Why have we, um, done such a, a fantastic job to relocate them here and, 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 um, have them take seed and, and in multiply the way they have? What, what is the necessary function for the wolf on the landscape here in Wisconsin today? I, that I don't know. And I, and I, if somebody could answer that, I would love to have the answer for the necessary reason that we have to have any.
Supervisor, uh, Reeser.
You're muted.
You're muted again. You'll get the hang of it.
No apologies, it automatically mutes. Um, so, uh, I would just suggest before we get in the weeds here, we should either vote yes or no on the resolution, but if we want to understand what's going on with wolf biology, let's bring a wolf biologist in. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion on the floor, uh, to postpone it indefinitely. And the clerk will call the roll.
Dodge?
Yes.
Duback?
Aye.
Gifford?
Aye.
Gussel?
No.
Hega?
Aye.
Hana?
Aye.
Barry Jakowski?
No.
Matt Jakowski?
No.
Jankowski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lattick?
Aye.
Martinson?
Aye.
Maresi?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
Pataki?
No.
Rakowski? Reeser?
Aye.
Soik?
No.
Splinter?
Aye, with the hope that we have some kind of expert address, address us in the future.
Zastro?
Aye.
Vote is fifteen to six, motion adopted.
So this will be postponed indefinitely. Motion passes. Number eight. Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amending Americalt Property.
Resolution number one ninety-six twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves an ordinance map amendment for the Americalt property.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Discussion. Discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment, Grochek Farms Property.
Resolution number one ninety-seven twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves an ordinance map amendment for the Grochek Farms property.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Moro. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, Portage County Flood Plane Zoning Ordinance Amendment.
Resolution number one ninety-eight twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee. This resolution approves a flood plan zoning ordinance amendment.
Motion by Supervisor Splinter, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski, discussion. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank all my colleagues in the Planning and Zoning Committee. Uh, this was a long drawn out affair and it took us a long time to make sure we got an ordinance that worked, uh, both to protect the environment and to allow citizens here in Portage County to, uh, develop commerce and, and, uh, it, it took us a long time, but I think we, we got a good document. And again, I'd like to thank everybody for sticking with us that's a member of the Planning and Zoning Committee.
There's no other discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, authorization of exception, uh, to Portage County Ordinance eleven point one, one point five, point two. Uh, procedure limited term employee LTE Health and Human Services slash contact tracers for additional hours.
Resolution number one ninety-nine twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two submitted by the Health and Human Services Board and Human Resources Committee. This resolution authorizes additional hours for contact tracers.
Motion by Supervisor Duback, seconded by Supervisor. Motion by Supervisor Duback, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. There's no discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, and this came out of my office. This is a long one. Amending Portage County Zoning Ordinance Section 3.1, entitling the Portage County Board of Supervisors Structures and Responsibilities of the Standing Committee and Standing Appointments of the Portage County Board to clarify the appointment procedures for all committees, update statutory references, and remove redundant term languages. Thank you.
Resolution number 200 2020 2022, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee. This resolution approves an amendment to Chapter 3.1 of the Code of Ordinances to clarify language and remove redundancy. The purpose of this resolution is not to change any committee appointment process and thus requires an amendment on the floor because there was a copy and paste error during the revisions. So on page nine, under...
Let me get something on the floor first.
Oh, okay.
So I need a motion and a second to get it on the floor. Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. And we do have an amendment. Go ahead.
Sorry, I try to talk as little as possible. So this resolution does require an amendment. So on page nine, under 3.1.2.2(c), the Justice Coalition, the language for the appointment process was inadvertently changed. It is an executive operations appointment, not a county executive appointment. So the language that's currently in our ordinance is correct. So we would just need an amendment to basically remove that correction in the ordinance.
So we have the appointment of the executive ops is stricken in this document, and then it says that it's an appointment by the executive. That's incorrect. It needs to be flipped around. So if I have a motion stating Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Lattick, and this is to make the correction that was inadvertently, who has the authority to appoint that committee? And it was printed incorrectly. It's actually flipped around, so. So we have amendment on the floor to make that correction. Any other discussions on the amendment only? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the original resolution. Anything else yet? No. Supervisor Barry Jakowski, then Supervisor Maresi.
Just the effort and some clarification, Mr. Chair, and thank you. When you read it, use in the second to the last line, you used the word procedures and not processes, and it says processes.
Processes, I'm sorry. Appointment processes, yes.
Hey, thank you.
Yep. Supervisor Maresi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize to our esteemed guests for being a blabbermouth tonight. But there's some important stuff here I'd like to discuss. It's under 3.1.1.7, the Land and Water Conservation Committee. I'm going to propose that we add a seventh member to this committee. And the main reason is that we've come to a sort of stalemate in some decision-making processes with, in regards to groundwater cleanliness and nitrate contaminations and things like that. Currently, when there's a discussion and possible action on...
Supervisor Maresi, I think I'm, and as I said here now, after I was just made aware that you were going to try and make this amendment, as I think about it, the purpose of this and that's the way it's posted is that we're just making clarifications on things that already exist in the terms. I think that's better that we make that and bring it back up on executive ops and bring it through there, else that, do you understand, that make more sense?
Yes.
Because this, this, what we're trying to do is, I talked to staff when I was looking at other committees, and it seemed like the language, when I would go through our little handbook, it was saying the same thing in a different way. And we had talked about it, and we went back, and they did some research and found out that the stuff has been done over years, and different corp councils view it differently. We're trying to make everything more consistent, use the same terms, put them in the same order on, in the book. So everything same as we did with the agendas, where everything is in the same order and the same situation. This is what we're, the main drive of this is, in this, this effort and exercise that we're doing right here tonight. And I think what you're talking about is, is trying to change the structure of a committee, and that's not what we're trying to do here tonight, so.
I understand. Thank you for the clarification.
I respectfully ask you to withhold your amendment. We can bring it through another committee.
I'd be happy to do that and look forward to that discussion in the future.
Send an email to, to the clerk.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Supervisor Zastro? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just out of curiosity, what happens if it goes through, executive ops gets shot down? What recourse or what's the next step then? Wanted to be brought forward.
That's not germane to the topic at hand this evening, Mr. Chair. That's, you know, it's with any issue. It's the same, it's the same issue as, as any other item that would have one committee and whether we can find...
Well, it was brought up that it needs to be brought before our executive committee, so I'm asking a question then of the executive committee. What happens if they shoot it down?
By order.
Very germane.
If it comes through, if it gets shot down like anything else, then that's where it would die. Any other committee and any other things, so far as I understand it, if it's going through one committee, corp council, it's, it doesn't go, it doesn't, doesn't make it to the board floor. Is that correct?
No. It has to make it through one committee.
I suppose it depends on, on the committee and the request being made. In this instance, to answer that question, I'd have to see what the proposed, you know, wording change is. But yeah, if it's discussed once in that, in that term of the board, then, then it's done. And if it, if it doesn't make it through that committee to the board.
I would think that being its, executive ops is, is the keeper of committees and, is where it should belong, but I think also the committee that we're talking about should probably have it on their agenda as well.
I would agree, but then it's gonna, we know the outcome, so.
You know, and, and that was discussed, that executive ops and the possibility of what that adding that person would do as well, so. Back to the original resolution. If there's no further adjust, we've got the amended taken care of. There's no other amendments. All those in favor of this resolution as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 13. Establishing the processes, process and procedures for Portage County's use of state and local fiscal recovery funds it receives as a direct allocation from the United States government via the Emergency American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Resolution number 201 2020 2022, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes and adopts the procedures for allocating and approving funds through the state and local recovery funds program.
Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Merle.
Oh, boy. Can you read this?
Yeah.
So I guess we have an amendment from Finance.
Finance Director Josie has an amendment proposed here in the seventh whereas clause. She is recommending to add a bullet that says, "The Human Resources Committee will consider positions as part of this process and make recommendations to the Finance Committee prior to funding recommendations."
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Maresi on the amendment. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Amendment carries. Back to the original resolution as amended. Any other discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 14. Authorizing state and local fiscal recovery funds for Midstate Technical College Advanced Manufacturing Engineering Technology and Apprenticeship Center.
Resolution number 202 2020 2022, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes and grants $1,299,000 to Midstate for construction and equipment costs for the AMEDA Center.
Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Pataki. Discussion. Supervisor Bob Gifford?
Yeah, I was, I was glad to see item number eight, whereas number eight here, where it says, "AMEDA Center will target unemployed, underemployed, underserved communities and youth in the general public with skills training and barrier removal support services to help address workforce challenges in central Wisconsin." And this goes back to your presentation last month where it was said that between now and 2030, we're going to need to replace, I think it was 1,300 manufacturing workers in the district, three-county district. And that, this is just following up on my comments to the solar energy presenter, that I think it would be really great if that AMEDA Center had some kind of like an energy lab or an energy studies center, you know?
I believe it's going to be Silver Leaf certificate, certificate? Is that, is that right on the new building? What's that?
Lead Silver.
Lead Silver certificate. So they're, and Wisconsin Rapids has a program for the solar.
Great, yeah, that's good. I'm all in favor of it.
They're gonna cover all of that. Anybody else have any questions or comments? I would just like to say that I'm excited that we are, the county, all of us at the board, have the opportunity to get this project over to finish line. We are the last step to make this happen. And it's something that is great for our community, great for development of our young people who are unsure where they want to go or what they want to do, are going to have some opportunities to do some things they weren't sure that, or was even available to them. This project is a, is a great economic development for the area, the region, and it's something that we have the opportunity to, to invest in, along with 80 to 100 other people in this community that have come forward to make an investment of their own, whether it, and it's such a diverse group, from banking to manufacturing to farming, it's all over the board. And it's, it's just exciting to know that with this motion and with this passing, that this will be built. And what an asset it will be to this area. And from a financial standpoint, this money that we are investing that was from the federal government is going to have a return on investment of probably a year, year and a half every year. So this is just, is just a great opportunity, and I'm glad we have the opportunity to see this happen or see it come through. And I encourage all of you to support this. Supervisor Barry Jakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just think everybody sitting in this room this evening would like to thank everybody from Midstate to the other investors for picking this ball up and running with it. A great opportunity for Portage County and great opportunity for humanity in itself.
And the one thing is that everybody's coming together in a time and a day when we don't see that that often. It's great to see everyone coming together. Maybe we can all learn something. So, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Johnson? Yeah, Kayla can't write it down fast enough. Go ahead.
Yeah. She, she needs to do that shorthand course. Yeah. Anyway, I just, I just wanted to, this is a great project, and I had the good fortunes about five years ago to sit next to, next to Mr. Wayne Bushman at a wedding. And five years ago, he was telling me about his dream of this facility. And he wouldn't, he wouldn't stop talking about it throughout the entire dinner and cocktails after. So this is, this is a wonderful thing, and I, it's great that we're going to be a part of bringing that dream to a reality. And I get to vote on that, which I learned about already five years ago. So thank you.
I would wish everyone would have the opportunity to sit next to Mr. Bushman at the wedding. All of us that know him and love him, he's, he's, he's something else, so. And he was a big asset to this. And thanks, Wayne, for all you did. I know you've, you've been pulling the big cart too, helping these folks and with all of their work, so thanks a lot for that. So if there's no other discussion or comments, I'd love to call this question. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you. Build your center.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Zastro?
I think, don't believe you can call it unanimous, as we were told that I...
I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
Not have voted, so.
Thank you. Thank you for, yeah. I appreciate it.
It was most people.
Almost everybody that was here. With that being said, Chair, I would like to see a roll call vote for this. No, we're not gonna...
To show enough support.
Not gonna go through that.
Just because you want to get to the date.
I want to go to Florida as soon as we're done, I can leave, so. I will take a motion to adjourn. Supervisor Neville has a question?
Well, it's not a question. I thought the unnamed Mr. Wezo wanted to speak.
He gets enough opportunity to do that. I don't know. I think we're gonna give him a, we're gonna give him a pass. Somebody take his picture. Yeah. All right, take a motion to adjourn. Someone, please. Supervisor Duback, seconded by Supervisor Zastro. All in favor of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
A video of this meeting is available for viewing on the city's website, StevensPoint.com/videos.